2021. Let us all rise for the pledge allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Openshooting Meeting Act is posted in the back of the room by the northwest door. The order of business of the city council is follows. A clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker shall begin by stating their name, address, and whether they are speaking in favor or opposition to the item. All testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all the public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second Monday of the month, which is today, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
If you wish to appear in person on an item on the agenda, you may come to the county city building at 555 South 10th Street. Limited seating is available in the council chambers. Testifiers are asked to wait in the Bill Luxford Studio or in the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you are finished speaking, you can exit to the chambers through the door to your immediate left. On our agenda today for Monday, April 12th, our first item on the agenda is Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anybody that would like to come forward on Sections 1 and 2? Seeing none, go ahead and vote on the consent items.
Item 1A is approving the City of Lincoln's investment activity report from the City Treasurer for quarter ending February 28, 2021, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Christensen. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended January 31, 2021, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. The ends are Consent Agenda 1 and 2. Next is our public hearing liquor resolutions. Item 3A, application of Norm &amp; Son Inc. doing business as Norm's on 48th for the addition of a catering license to its Class D liquor license at 2510 South 48th Street.
Is there anybody here who would like to come forward on this liquor application? Seeing none, is there anybody else that would like to come forward to speak on this? Seeing none.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item 3A.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions? Nope, seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, move on to our public hearing for resolutions.
Item 4A is appeal by Richard Bradley and Roberta Bradley of Planning Commission, approval of waiver 21001 to waive the 3 to 1 width-to-depth ratio requirement on property generally located at 3239 South 46th Street.
Would anybody like to come forward on this item?
I think Jane should be recognized first.
Okay, Jane?
Um, I know this is sort of a point of personal privilege, the Bradleys. Were not able to attend last week and they won't be able to attend this week for concerns that they have, their health concerns. And I just wanted to read their reasoning why they filed the appeal. It's a very short letter. Dear members of the Lincoln City Council, this letter is to explain our appeal of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission's March 3, 2021, approval of waiver WVR 2021001. We are unable to attend the city council meeting due to the COVID virus, but would like all the council members to know our objections. Mr. Euler of Euler Rentals is requesting a waiver of the 3 to 1 width-to-depth ratio on his rental property at 3239 South 46th Street in order to put in another driveway and build a house in the backyard of the property. In his request, he states the request waiver is minor, but to the people in our neighborhood, this is a major change that would directly affect our homes, property, and privacy. To build a house in the back of the property affects at least a dozen homes and their families. The residents in the rental property at 3239 South 46th Street especially would have no privacy to go into their backyard to relax, use their grill, have their children play, et cetera. They would be in the front yard of the house built behind their house. We have lived in this neighborhood since 1975, 46 years. We bought our home because it has a large lot, as our neighbors probably did so for the same reason. We all take care of our properties and love this neighborhood. Mr. Euler has been bullying properties in our neighborhood for over the years. We feel that if he is allowed to build a house in the back of his rental property at 3239 South 46th Street, he will do this to more in the area, all for more profit, rather than for the good of all families in our neighborhood. This would set a precedence, and it is important to stop trying to squeeze a second house anywhere on a property. We are certain no one on our city council would approve of building a house in their or their neighbor's backyard and give away their privacy. The house Mr. Euler proposes to build is only about 100 feet from our backyard on Sherman Street. Mr. Euler has implied that he has come into our neighborhood as our saving grace to clean up all the trash-filled properties, which is simply not true. We love our neighborhood and take care of our properties. On March 3, 2021, two members of the Lincoln City Lancaster County Planning Commission voiced concerns and had reservations about Mr. Euler and his waiver and his plans, but went ahead and approved the waiver. We strongly feel it should not have been approved, and this is why we are making an appeal to our Lincoln City Council. Our other neighbors have their objections on record with the Lincoln City Lancaster County Planning Commission. We ask that you read these also. Please consider our objections and those of our neighbors and overturn the approval for this waiver. We want to keep our neighborhood and not have it in control of someone who is in it for profit, rather than thinking of what is good for the people in our area. Please do not let Mr. Euler destroy our neighborhood. And I don't know, Chair, if there's anyone that's here to provide public testimony or not.
Is there anybody here who would like to come forward on this item?
If not, later on, when we go into the voting session, I will make a motion to that we delay making a decision on this for another week.
Yes, sir.
Oh.
I am the applicant, may I speak?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Euler, please do.
Please do.
Thank you very much. My name is Philip Euler, I reside at 5520 Grouse Place. I'm a neighbor in this area. Both my daughters live on 46th Street, one at 3240 and the other one at 3342 South 46th. The statement from the Bradleys, I understand that they have their point of view, but framing me as for profit only is misrepresentation at best. I started my rental business at 3327 South 48th in 1986. I've spent 30-plus years acquiring properties so that I could bring forth to the Planning Commission a better utilization of that space. It did have horses on it, but when it was annexed, those horses were grandfathered and are long gone. It had a wealth of trees, most of them volunteer, and I did clean up that space between 48th and 46th Street. I have hauled literally dozens of dumpsters out of that property, not only trees. I've taken out old cars, mattresses, box springs, all kinds of metal, concrete, and other things that I don't want to mention. I think I've brought a lot of good to this neighborhood, and I've asked to speak with the Bradleys, and they have not returned my calls, they have not returned my emails. And I think that them not showing up, at least on Zoom, is disingenuous. This is our two-zoned part of the city. Anybody who has a property there can add another family by duplexing the property they have and/or putting auxiliary unit in or tearing down their house and building a bigger one if they're over 10,000 square feet. My lot is 13,500 square feet, it's one-third of an acre. It's been grossly underutilized for years before I even bought the house. It was not well-maintained, and that was one of the reasons I bought it, is so that I could bring it up to a standard that I want for my tenants. And now I'm ready to sell that house to a developer who would want to build a new house back there under the same covenants as Prairie Hill Place will have. So it will be part of a homeowners association, and that homeowners association will include lawn care and garbage and other things to maintain that property in a proper manner. I implore you to go along with the Planning Commission's recognition that this is good for the City of Lincoln and good for the neighborhood. As you can tell, I'm an old man, I'm not going to be buying a whole bunch of other properties in this neighborhood. I'm actually actively trying to sell and get out of the rental business. My plan is to sell all the homes on 46th and 48th Street, some to tenants. I have tenants who want to build a home in Prairie Hill Place. I have neighbors who have expressed an interest in building in there in the latter years of their life. So I'm a little bit upset about being represented as somebody who's a bad neighbor and just coming in and disrupting things, because my family lives here. And I don't want any ill for them, obviously. So I am, I ask you to approve this. I've been very patient. I've tried to talk to the neighbors. If they don't talk to me, then I can't find any kind of a resolution. Them saying that I'm 100 feet away from them is, that's a half, almost a third of a block. I mean, it's just, I'm sorry, I won't go on anymore. Is there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Euler, I have a few questions for you, but I do want to offer some comments as well. I know myself, Tammy Ward, Sandra Washington, we have spoken to a number of neighbors, and it's not just the Bradleys that have concerns about some of the policies and that they consider bullying, that they consider intimidating. Other neighbors have been contacted repeatedly by you or a representative, asking them if they want to sell their home. So there is some foundation in truth. Also, members of the Planning Commission have also had conversations with many of the neighbors, and they have heard the same. So I want to assure you that it's not an isolated incident, and I have talked to the Bradleys, and they have expressed tremendous reluctance to contact you for the same reasons. They said they've heard nothing but that you can be intimidating and very forceful, and they're elderly, and they did not want to get involved in that. But I want to just say a couple of things and ask you a couple of questions, if I may.
Okay.
Are you aware that getting a waiver is not an entitlement?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then also, I noticed recently that you had a notice to comply concerning another project across 46th Street on the east side. Can you tell us a little bit about when you will come into compliance with some of the regulations that you have agreed to?
Well, I've talked to Trevor, who is the city contact for SWEAP permits, and he tells me that everything is fine from his perspective. Given the, I filed three or four SWEAP reports as required by the state of Nebraska. Trevor has read those, he understands that our construction timeline is to do major earth work beginning April 20. Since we have been removing trees and there's been quite a lot of equipment on the property, just cleaning up those trees, we have put a silt fence around the catch basin at the north end of the property to make sure that debris does not go down the storm sewer. I've monitored it, there has been no problems with the three-inch rain we had or with the one and a quarter of last week. As I understand, in talking to city staff, that Jimmy Brewster is the one that brought the complaint, and he seemed to be confused about the meeting that you and Councilperson Washington conducted about where the road was going to come out. He still thinks that someone's moved it since that was approved by the city council, and that is not the case. My engineer has put together a timeline of all the different possible road application replacements way back in the summer until it was finally approved in December. I've gone to Jimmy's door, I've called him, I've left him messages, and he has not responded. You know, how people perceive me, I only have control of how I approach them. I've never talked to the Bradleys. I was as civil as I possibly could be when I left them a voice message. My email was not threatening, I just wanted to find out what their concerns were. People don't like change, you guys know that more than anybody.
Mr. Euler, could I get back to the question I asked you? So you're telling me that the construction activity has already started, but since you got the notice on April 1st, you're saying that you have implemented the necessary swift measurements to really control erosion and storm water runoff? So since April 1st, you have put in all the necessary things?
The contractor that has been hired is going to start on April 20, and that will be the first, all of his equipment is there. He was going to install it last week, and the rain prohibited that. He knows that he has to put the perimeter fence in, and no earth will be moved until that is done.
Okay.
And I've explained that to Trevor, and he's, he told me that he's done with that schedule.
So you're not working with a civil engineer on filing the reports that need to be done, or you're doing it on your own?
I am doing my own.
Doing it on your own?
I am a professional electrical engineer in the state of Nebraska.
Okay, terrific. And also, I just want to point out one thing that, you know, we are giving this a tremendous amount of time and consideration, I hope you realize that. And that the reason why we ask for delay is we want to gather more information and certainly reach out to the neighbors and to actually come up with some conditions that we would like to present to you. And that's why we will be asking for a week's delay. But the one thing that is important as we go forward with all these projects is, in the comprehensive plan, it's very clear. The goal is to preserve existing housing and promoting home ownership. And it should remain the focus in established neighborhoods with modest opportunities for infill and redevelopment. And, you know, that's why we approved your other project on the east side of 46th Street. We knew that that was important, and we wanted to make sure that we, we see that home ownership is available and an opportunity. So our concern was, we want to make sure it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. I know that the commissioners, the planning commissioners also had some concerns, so for that reason, we'll be asking for a week's delay, but it'll just be on a decision only. And then I'd like an opportunity to have some time to discuss with you some of the conditions we're considering. So I certainly...
Well, I mean, you people are the policymakers, and I'm at here making a request that we all understand it's a technical thing. If the lot wasn't as big as it is, I wouldn't be here. I, I can't help the fact that Nancy Seltzer and Becky Cass went around the neighborhood and petitioned people to stop me. And I've got a concern because I have experienced vandalism to my properties. Now, I can't prove who it is, but I've had people who drive on my lawns and my neighbor's lawn, Mr. Curry, that's adjacent to Prairie Hill Place, and tear up the sod right at the same time that the Planning Commission approved my Prairie Hill Place CUP. I've let that go, I hope that it didn't happen anymore, and it hasn't. Last week, my tenant at 3239 called me and said, "My mailbox has been ripped off the post, and the mailman brought it up to the front porch." I don't know if that has anything to do with what's going on here, but when do I get civil justice in having people stop labeling me for somebody I am not?
Well, I think in all fairness, in order to be a good neighbor, you must demonstrate that you yourself are a good neighbor. And what we're hearing and seeing is not an isolated incident. And I understand, we're giving you a tremendous amount of time, of our energy and our talents, to make sure that you are afforded all the due consideration that you are certainly entitled to, and I want it...
What about the people who wrote positive letters about Prairie Hill Place? Who did tell that I am a good neighbor?
I think we did listen, Mr. Euler.
I do plow the street on 46th because it's downhill, it's good for everybody, and I'm sorry, Councilperson Raybold, I understand that they have their point of view, but there is another side of the story.
And we heard that, and we took it into consideration, and that's why we did move that project forward. And as you know, you have a number of commitments and conditions that you're obligated to fulfill, and we know that you will live up to those commitments and considerations and conditions that you have committed to living up to. And I thank you again for taking the time to come and speak with us today, and I know that we are going to delay making a decision for one more week, and I will be in touch with you sometime this week.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Euler?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you.
Very much.
Any other, anybody else like to come forward on this item? Do you have a question?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff, for David Carey, Planning Director.
I'm going to bring Steve up, just in case we get some technicalities here.
I was getting ready to thank you very much for bringing Mr. Stephen Rickson up as well. I have a couple of questions about this, because Mr. Euler did say that this was, the lot is long, so I've read the reports, and the lot is about 10-foot, little over 10-foot longer than what would normally just slide past as a right. And so I'd like you to explain just a couple of questions, answer a couple of questions. All right, so the 3 to 1 ratio, why do we have that rule in place?
I'll let Steve take that.
Sure, that is one that actually we've had for quite some time, so it's something that probably goes back into the 70s or so. It was a general philosophy that you're trying to avoid having really long, narrow, deep lots. In some cases, in the county particularly, that's a problem where you get an awful lot of curb cuts as one way of trying to divide up the property. So in general, in residential areas, it's not typical. So most of our lots, since they have been following that rule, are typically not that way. But it doesn't mean that we don't necessarily have some panhandle lots. As a matter of fact, the kind of panhandle lot is something that is allowed. And as we were providing some examples, particularly what we have in some older neighborhoods like this one, particularly on the other side of the street, is that we have really deep lots that were created before we had a 3 to 1 standard. And so over time, we've had people who have come back in where you have the streets all the way around it, and there's this kind of space in the middle that maybe one or two people own. In this particular circumstance, this is over in the area of 35th and J Street. So you have J Street right in here. So we have two lots that were kind of similar to what would be allowed here, that you had a lot in the front, and they subdivided to have a house in the back. And we actually have an entire property that is called Christensen Court. And Christensen Court actually has 12 townhomes that were built back behind the other houses. And so it's a little less of a typical circumstance. But the other thing we were also pointing out as well in this is that today, here is the lot in question, and it is correct, it could have a duplex built on it. So today, there is one unit, they could add on to that unit, and the area in white is generally the buildable area of the lot today. It has a front yard setback, five-foot sides, and a 20-foot rear yard setback. The subdivision as proposed would instead split it into two lots, and it has the same five-foot side yard setback, the same 20-foot rear, the same 25-foot front yard. But now, because of a new lot line, there's actually a new rear yard created. And so the unbuildable area for the main house is actually increased, and the buildable area is actually reduced in terms of where the main building could go. And so that was one of our reasons for supporting it, is that the impact to the neighbors behind it to the west or on either side won't be any different in terms of where somebody could build today. Because today, you could build a second unit back in here, you could attach them, you could build garages. All of that pretty much remains the same. The only waiver is that you're now going to have a lot that's a little bit longer than it is white.
I have a second question. Can you tell, is there any rule about where the front door is on the rear lot?
No. And nor is there any rule today in terms of where the front door is. If somebody wants to build a house here and have the front door face to the east, or, you know, off to the side, I should say, I shouldn't say east, in any lot in Lincoln, we don't have that kind of a requirement.
Okay.
Even in our neighborhood design standards, I'll just point out, we do have, you have to have infill windows or openings, but they don't necessarily have to be the front door.
I would say that the same setbacks would be required of the second unit.
Right. So I'm looking at those setbacks, and the five-foot side yard setbacks, to my thinking, and I might not be right, but to my thinking, we have those narrower setbacks on the side because there's sort of an assumption that that's the side of the house. And so we have greater setbacks at the front and at the back. And so when we put in the greater rear yard setback on the first house, we're, I'm just trying to understand the, how the house might face, because people are saying that they're losing privacy. And I think the gentleman on the north side, adjacent property, north side, was saying, "Now my children can't play in the yard because someone's front windows are facing my backyard." So I just wanted to address that. I'm not saying I have strong feelings, whether it's a true or not true statement. It's what he believes, but I'd like to have some context here.
Sure. So back on the what is allowed today, the white is the buildable area, so they could, as long as they attach it to the first unit, they can build another second unit back here today. It could have a front door that faces to the street, 46th. It could have it to either direction. They could also likewise put a big deck on this side of the building, or a deck on this side of the building, or a deck on the back, if you're thinking about privacy. I mean, that might be the more active outside space than your front door, for instance. And so the same kind of goes to, okay, if this split was allowed, that second unit could face to 46th Street, it could face north-south. The decks could be built on either side, the deck could be built on the back, you could build a big deck on the front of it. You might make that your front porch, so to speak. So it really doesn't dictate the placement of decks, porches, doors, that type of thing. You might have a front door here, but actually, you come in and out, most of the time, your side door, because it faces your driveway, and that's actually where you're actively coming in and out of your car and that type of thing. So it doesn't really change the dynamics of that part either way. The main thing it does is it does allow these two units to be sold separately, because they would now be each on a separate lot. Under this circumstance, if you built two units on it, they would have to be sold together to one person who would then probably likely could live in one and rent one out, or rent them both out.
Thank you very much.
Question over here. Any other, yes, councilperson?
I have a question, Steve. Thank you very much. So you mentioned that if you wanted to build another unit, it had to be attached to the existing unit? Is that what you said, or?
That's for the current circumstances, that we allow the two together. And I can also say that, yes, one could be, if it was an accessory dwelling unit, rules that we had allowed, that could actually be separate. So you're right. Thank you for correcting me on that. They actually could be separate from each other as well.
And then, you know, you gave some great examples in your previous slide where you showed how some of those lots were broken down, and like the townhomes. Can you tell me, what is, are they rentals? Are you aware, are they rentals? Are they home, you know, owner occupied with some of the examples that you provided?
Sure. The one that I'm most familiar about, this Christiansen Court, all of those are independent little units that are sold off separately. So I believe most of them might be owner occupied, but we don't necessarily keep track of them once they are created, so I don't know for certain of the mix of any of them.
And then the other two?
I don't know. Each of them just has one dwelling unit on the other two.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else that'd come forward to speak on this item?
Good afternoon. Good to see you, Roy. Just wanted to point out a couple of things with the waivers that the gentleman was asking for. I have noticed that this body has handed out waivers in the past, pretty extreme waivers for additional housing, which this city does need. Waivers not just for front setback, but also on the same property, a side setback waiver and a rear setback waiver. The rear setback waiver, I think, that I'm talking about in reference to the row houses in the cemetery, all the way back to right on the property line as it comes to the parking lot. And, you know, it was this body's decision that the ends justified the means, it was worth it for that additional housing. I did appreciate councilperson Raybold's voicing of owner occupied housing and how important that is. And that is something I have testified in the past, in that while there is a need for rental housing, housing that you pay for on a monthly basis to a landlord, there's a need for that, to provide liquidity in your, when you move, you're not going to be there for a long time, you just need a place. Or if you don't have the financial means to purchase a house, there's a need for that. But the real benefit comes through, as, again, I've testified before, and as you know, owner occupied, where the person owns the home and occupies the home. That's really where you build wealth and where you get out of poverty. And so I appreciated councilperson Raybold's voicing of that and the importance of that. So I just wanted to point out those two things. I hope that that means a, that it's continually on your mind, not just of rentals in this city, but also owner occupied. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's move on to the next item.
Item, excuse me, item 4B, approve original Grotta LLC doing business as OG Grotta as a Keno satellite located at 2755 Jamie Lane, number 15, as a Keno satellite.
Is there anybody that'd like to come forward to speak on this item?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Christopher Dico. I represent Grotta on this matter, and it was our understanding that you wanted us present, so we're here to answer any questions that may have arisen.
Appreciate you coming down. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant on this issue? Yes, councilperson Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming down. I was initially a little confused about the location of this. I think I thought the second Grotta was the original Grotta, anyway. I now know which Grotta we're talking about. But I have some questions about who manages the gambling license. So I think at your properties, the Grotta properties, you have a manager for the liquor license. And I'm curious if you have a manager for the gambling license or that portion of the Keno license? Is that...
At the 70th and A location, is that what you're talking?
At the location with which you would like to add?
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a, the bar manager would be Matt Escri, and the Keno license would have to be under me as the owner.
Okay. And then how much day-to-day responsibility do you have for managing that?
I really don't do much as far as day-to-day. I usually let my bar managers take care of the day-to-day operations. I do mostly the accounting and payroll and things like that.
Okay. All right. My other question would have to do with checks and balances. I'm not as familiar with the, sort of the backend behind on Keno. So if you could explain, how do we, how do we manage, where are the checks and balances for Keno?
They're all trained through Big Red Keno, so I really don't have anything to do with the actual Keno operation. Big Red takes care of all the training on all that.
All right. All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Yes, councilperson Christiansen.
You have Keno currently at the 70th and A location?
Correct.
Okay. And what brought about this application? Have you never had it at this location before?
Well, I didn't have it when I owned it before. I sold it in 2015.
That's what I thought, so...
Yeah, and so the landlord approached me about just taking it back over again, so I'm just moving back in there. And since I have Keno over there, I'm just going to do it over there. There's really not a whole lot of places in that area that have it, so...
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Just one clarification. This is a Big Red Keno operation?
Yes.
And they run the Keno?
Yeah, they have to, in the city of Lincoln, so...
Okay. And they're in charge of the gaming, right?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to the next item.
Item 4C is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for March 16th through March 31st, 2021.
Is there anybody that'd like to come forward on, speak on the new impending claims? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Truckee, 4925 Thomas Brook Lane. And I'm just hoping that today, the council and perhaps maybe even legal counsel if needed, could clear up something in one of the documents here. Under the claims PDF, obviously, it lists all the different claims against the city. We have the approved, the denied, and then the pending. And under the pending section, there's a particular paragraph that reads as follows, "Lancaster County filed claim in an unspecified amount for alleged damages related to the issuance of directed health measures and expenses associated with defending a lawsuit. This claim is under review and is pending." So I think, despite the fact that it's in there at all, I think one of the unique things about this is that it's an unspecified amount, whereas every other item in this document has a dollar value affixed to it. So I just wanted to bring this to, again, the public's attention. It would be great if the council, again, or legal counsel, could maybe clarify this for the public on what's going on here.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Yes.
Can we get city attorney?
City attorney like to come forward?
Usually comes out that door.
Yeah, he comes through that back door. City attorney, where are you? There he is, yay! Coming around the corner.
Auntie Christie, city attorney.
Are you familiar with this? Pending claim?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, well, I mean, yeah, I'll be happy to answer whatever questions that I can for the council. I would just note that there are times where there is an unspecified amount when people file a claim, and I think that there are, I see some other unspecified amount claims in there as well. So it's not, I guess I just want to be clear that it's not unheard of for there to be an unspecified amount listed.
So I guess my question would be, it's on pending. What would be required to take it off pending?
So it could get taken off of pending in, say, one of several different ways. Once there's a claim, the city has six months to respond. And then there's a, if the city does not respond within that timeframe, then it would be considered denied, and then it would go through that process. Also, the claimant could withdraw the claim as well. The city could also deny the claim, and then, as you're familiar with, the claimant would have the opportunity to come in if they, and address the council if they wish. But those are just three ways generally that it could come over.
So what's the recourse of a claimant if we were to deny a claim at some, this claim at some point? What would their recourse be? If the city council denied it?
Well, someone could always file a lawsuit.
Okay.
You could always go to court, district court.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, councilperson Shob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Christie, thank you for coming forward. So following up on councilman Christiansen's question, can they go directly to district court, or is this a step that's necessary to file a claim with the city to get standing in district court? Can they just bypass filing a claim against the city and go directly to filing a lawsuit?
So I would say, generally speaking, there are, there's the tort claims act, and so a claim would have to start, if it's a tort claim, it would have to start through a claims process before a lawsuit could be filed. There are other claims that do not, you know, claims that are not torts that would not have to go through the tort claims act. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I probably should have gone to law school, but so I guess the tort threw me off. So this is not considered a tort claim, or this is considered a tort claim?
They have filed it as a tort claim.
Okay.
So...
So, okay, that does help. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, that's the end of the public hearing for the resolutions. Adam Clark?
Item 4A is appealed by Richard Bradley and Roberta Bradley, a planning commission approval of waiver 21001 to waive the three-to-one with-to-depth ratio requirement on property generally located at 3239 South 46th Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Been seconded by councilperson Christiansen. Councilperson Raybold.
I'd like to make a motion that we delay for action only for one week until April 19th. Second?
Been moved and seconded, that we delay this for action only?
Action only.
For one week till April 19th? Any comments, questions? Yes, councilperson Shob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're going to, we're just considering delaying, and I assume that's to gather more information and answer questions, or get together as a group and talk about it? What's our real objective for this week?
To discuss...
Go ahead, councilperson Raybold.
Should have stated it in the motion, to discuss conditions to be placed on the granting of a waiver that we have done routinely with other waivers.
I just want to make sure we had an objective rather than just having a week off to do nothing. So we're going to discuss that. Thank you, councilwoman Raybold.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll on the motion to delay one week.
Raybold? Yes. Bowers?
Yes.
I will vote yes for discussion only. In order to keep the discussion, I will vote yes.
Okay.
Well, wait...
Yeah, she's not talking about for later, for discussion for later.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, keep calling the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Raybold?
She already called her.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Well, this will come back to us next week for discussion only amongst us. No public hearing.
No, we're gonna discuss only during this week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Item 4B is approve original Grada LLC doing business as OG Grada as a Keno satellite located at 2755 Jamie Lane, number 15, as Keno satellite, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Christensen. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 4C is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for March 16 through March 31, 2021, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, we'll move on to third ratings.
Item 5A is text amendment 21001, request of Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital to amend chapter 27.69 regarding signage regulations by amending sections 27.69.260, non-residential health care facilities to allow the electronic changeable copy, signs, and repealing section 27.69.260 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions?
This is a good thing.
Oh, Madonna Project's a good thing. As I understand it, this is on South Street, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's across from the Woggy Drug Building. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5B is change of zone 05061D, application of Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association to amend the Southwest Village planned unit development by revising the site plan to allow for a casino, a hotel, an increase in the number of dwelling units, decrease commercial floor area, and allocate to square footage and dwellings among the different parcels on the property generally located at South First Street and West Denton Road, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. You, yes?
I have a question. Do we have a representative from the Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association here to ask a question? Answer, answer a question.
Thank you, Lynn McNally, L Y N N E, capital M C, capital N A L L Y, 7055 South First Street, ready, willing, and able to answer any question.
Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it.
The question today is about parking for semi trucks.
Yes. We have parking planned for tractor trailers. We are, meaning not Warhorse, meaning the HBPA is currently in negotiations to obtain additional property. We do not have sufficient property on the parcel that we currently own. So we're negotiating on that. As you know, Chairman, I have something in verbal agreement, not in written agreement. So that's all I would prefer to say about that. But I, I am committing that that's what we're planning to do. If, if you would like me to put that into the PUD or, or put that into zoning, I can do that. I would just respectfully request that I be allowed to do that at a later date because if you, if you hold me up on this, it's gonna hold me up on the whole thing. And like I said, I don't, I don't have a written agreement yet. I do have one verbally to obtain the additional property.
I'm glad to hear that. We would probably stick an amendment in here that would just basically say at the time you go forward for zoning request at the time you go in.
The next zoning request I make?
Addressing the potential, all you have to do is address the potential of commercial vehicle, and it's just to the planning director.
Okay, because I will tell you that I will be coming back for an additional zoning change on the southwest corner of the parcel for where the barns are going to go, because I'm, I am redoing that entire plan down in that section of the property, which is gonna require a, a zoning amendment. So I will be coming back for a zoning change for that. So I'd be more than happy to put in a, a request at that time as well.
I think that this reads that basically all you have to do is go in front of the planning director and say, we got this satisfied at his, at his desire. You won't have to come back to us on the parking.
Okay, all right.
On this amendment. Yes, Councilperson Washington.
Which amendment?
The one that was handed to you right there, the one with the yellow. The yellow tag, or the pink.
Pink tag.
Pink tag, sorry.
You need an.
My father was colorblind, so.
Okay, then I'm gonna turn that one.
Councilperson Washington, may I address your question from the last meeting that we had? I spoke with two of my board members, and they have spoken with waste management. And we have an agreement already for them to do daily removal for us of the waste materials. However, because we have about 18 months to make a decision on that, we're looking at more environmentally friendly options. If we do the waste management option, the manure would go into the landfill, which we would prefer not to do. So we would prefer to take the fertilizer route. So, but I did want to tell you that, that we do have a backup plan in place currently to address that.
It's nice to know, sure.
Councilperson Raybold?
Yes, thank you, Lynn, for coming down. I don't know, have you had a chance to, to take a look at the amendment that we're proposing?
I have not.
Okay. May I give her a copy of this?
Yeah, let me give her a copy.
Thanks to the Winnebago tribe, I have both my vaccinations, so I'm glad to go.
Me too.
Basically, go to page?
Eight.
Eight. And it's the underline. When you submit to the building and safety for building permit application.
Okay.
Potential impact of a commercial vehicle.
Is Steve here?
Steve?
Yeah.
Hendricks?
Yeah.
Here, David would be here.
Okay, I just, I, I need to know where that fits in on my time schedule, 'cause I'm not sure.
That was gonna be my next question. What is your time schedule at this point?
Mine was for staff. Okay, yeah, let's keep going down this path, just keep us in.
We have questions, Chief.
Okay.
Before we go to staff, I think. Been trying to get your attention.
Mine was focused on here.
My, my only question is that he had, they had made accommodations for me on the Lomar F, because we're on a very tight construction schedule because of that. And I just want to make sure that this addition is not gonna slow me down. That's, that was my only question.
My understanding is, the way it's written, is that at the time of building permit, that the information that is being required as part of that motion to amend would be brought forward to the planning director, which is me, and to my satisfaction, which sounds like you probably already are in the process of getting it to that satisfactory point. So it shouldn't take any time other than making sure the paperwork is submitted.
Okay, I just wanted to make it clear that I didn't have to obtain additional approvals from you before the building permit could be issued. I didn't want that to slow me down.
It should not slow you down. You'd have to go through the building permit process anyways, so.
Okay, all right, okay. That, that's satisfactory to me, Chairman, if, if that's, if that would make you more comfortable.
Vanny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Ms. Ward, were you next? Go ahead, Ms. Ward. You're very kind. Mine's a little bit of a technical question. Thank you, Mr. Carey, for coming up. Lynn, thank you for coming back. Mr. Carey, we often see developments, PUDs, other rezoning things where we have a parking requirement, X number of car spots per units. Would this also, are we being redundant? Would this be something that's already part of the plan, asking to do this? I'll stop talking now.
The plan has already been, has been brought forward and about to get action of approval on it with the parking having been addressed. That is correct. The, the point that was brought up recent, more recently, is really just a question of whether or not large commercial vehicle, truck, tractor trailer trucks have been taken into consideration in the plan. So I, I think it was, it's a fair question just because of the possibility of a lot of that activity at the site.
Correct.
And I think that the applicant is already expressing that they have intentions to make sure that that is fully addressed.
Currently, Councilman, we are, we're proposing a one-to-one parking ratio, meaning one-to-one per gaming position. So I believe that the plan allowed for, I'm gonna remember this wrong, but approximately 1,250 parking spots, I believe. But it does not address tractor-trailer type vehicles. So when that came up, actually Chairman McGinnis had brought this up, and I think Councilman Christensen did as well. So I spoke with our partners at Ho-Chunk, and we worked out a plan. We, we decided that that is a need, especially since we're off Highway 77. We did not want to negatively, negatively impact the parking ratio because of that, but yet we wanted to be welcoming as well. So we had already been in negotiations, meaning the Horsemen had already been in negotiations to purchase an additional parcel. And the parcel that we're purchasing is much larger than what our needs were. So we've already talked to Lance about this. Lance is going to buy the excess part of the parcel that we're not interested in. And so that's how we're going to address it.
So back to my, thank you. Normally, we just don't, it's not been an issue, something we haven't considered? Does it need to be part of the code to the, we address larger than passenger-sized vehicles?
Uh, there's a, it depends on the use that we're talking about. Obviously, major warehouse facilities have to account for more about turning radius and access, being able to get large trucks in and out. Usually there, in those cases, there is a, a used layout plan that goes along with those types of facilities. But typically, the large truck capacity parking is not a typical part of the, of the parking plan of any type of development, other than some of these other ones that obviously the main activity would be a large commercial operation where that has a lot of truck traffic. But again, those end up being more about making sure that the access to the facility is designed, and they would be because that's the purpose of them, but we would make sure about that. But no, we don't have, we don't have a large demand for making sure large trucks are taken into account in our parking plans.
Translation, we're going over and above.
So my next, next, as you were saying, I'm thinking, what about that guy with the large motorhome that's bigger than a regular passenger vehicle? Or I'm looking, I'm really jonesing to buy a little trailer behind my pickup truck. Is that falling to the same category of large trucks? Is that a? Am I going, I'm going down a rabbit hole here. Stop me, please, somebody.
No, no, please, keep going. I mean, frankly, I think it means if you drive a tra, a truck with a pull-along behind, you have to work two gaming stations.
We, we are amused.
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a fifth-wheel trailer, you know? It's not gonna fit in my, where I put my little, you know, Smart Car Now.
So for, again, the bigger question is, is the, the use itself, is it going to attract certain, you know, travelers? I mean, that's really the question that's at hand.
Yeah.
And I think it's very possible on Highway 77, like you said, that we will get those large vehicles stopping. Again, most of the time, we're talking about turn radius capabilities and making sure the site can accommodate that type, not necessarily the parking part of it. So I, I think that there is a, a value in this large project to make sure that the parking for large vehicles is taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you, I'll stop now.
Councilperson Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things, so actually to Councilman Shob's point, which is not a rabbit hole, it actually, as a farm kid, those vehicles can get pretty large pretty quickly. So because, to our applicant's point, we got this less than an hour ago. So I too have not had a chance to read it. So the definition of that vehicle, I would like a better understanding of before. That concerns me as well as your timeframe. So I, but I do hear our director saying she's okay on, our applicant is okay on the timeframe. Should we require this? Is that correct, Director Carey? You don't see us slowing this down by adopting this today?
No, I don't, I don't think it slows anything down by adopting it today. I think it, it is one more step that would have, have to be taken before the building permit would be issued.
Well, you also have to keep in mind that my members who own the property, they're my bosses, drive horse trailers regularly. So, you know, to this point, you're preaching to the choir a little bit, you know, they, they have an independent need for that, so.
Horse trailers, I understand. Semis are bigger than horse trailers.
Not always, not always.
I, if you go down the interstate, right? My family has semis and horse trailers, so, to your point. I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. So that's my first thing to, to satisfy. So I'm also still confused, Mr. Chair, on your amendments. We have one motion to amend that came at the start of our meeting, 21R-18. So you want us to ignore that one?
Yes.
And, okay, so there.
Replace it with one that they delivered.
Okay, which we also just got it new, with the one that came just a little bit later, which none of us have been able, I have not been able to read through, which is 21-34. Is that correct? Is that what we're now looking at?
Yeah, 21-34 is, is requirement to investigate the capability of the parcels holding and having the capacity to accommodate semis that would be coming off Highway 77.
Right, right, okay.
Without crunching a bunch of other vehicles as they park.
I understand, okay. That's it for now, thank you.
Ms. Ms. Washington, do you have? Do you have another question?
I no longer have another question because Councilwoman Ward's question.
Put it back.
Thank you.
What is your timing on this?
Well, like I said, Lomar F was an issue. The planning commission was kind enough to find a workaround for me on that. You know, I'm trying to remember, we were, we were looking to break ground this summer, you know? The longer it takes, the closer you get to fall, and fall means spring if you don't get, if you don't break ground in time. So that's, that's kind of the timeline we were looking at. My, my issue with the, the purchase that I'm talking about is that the seller needs us to have a land contract by December 31st, but it, it has to be done by December 31st. That's the only requirement that I'm anticipating we're gonna have. So then it's just a matter of us getting financing for that parcel. So that's what I'm looking at.
Any other questions? Okay.
So then I would make a motion on behalf of Councilman McGinnis to amend, to add, submit to building and safety with a building permit application for improvements on parcel five, a parking study which specifically addresses the potential impact of commercial vehicle parking generated by the parcel five improvements, as well as a parking plan for commercial vehicles, addressing the impact identified, identified by said study to the satisfaction of the planning director.
I'll second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded for the motion to amend?
Whose cost is that? That my cost or your cost?
It would be your cost.
How much is that gonna be?
He didn't, at one point, he also said that he just needs to know what your plan is, right? It'd be the planning director.
Planning director.
It's who they submitted to. Yes.
My question comes back. So is the parking study a new requirement?
The way that it's written, yes.
Why do we need a parking study if what we say is?
When I already have one.
We, we just need a parking plan for commercial vehicles.
And a parking study's gonna cost me money.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to say something before we vote.
Okay.
While I appreciate what this is trying to do, I don't think it's necessary to accomplish the purpose we have, because I think the applicant has been cooperative and responsible and has a plan to take care of this issue, because it's in their own best interest.
Thank you, Councilman, and I am on the record saying that we're going to do it.
Counselperson Rabel.
I would like to make a modification to the amendment and change the word "study" to a "plan" that is submitted to the Planning Director.
That's a new motion to amend.
So that's a motion to amend the amendment.
The amendment, take out the word "study."
And just put "plan."
How about idea?
Do I hear a second?
Just a second, I mean, just a moment. Could you say that one more time? So would you read it the way that you would want it to be said?
Well, I don't have my copy, so.
Oh, I can't.
I'm gonna give.
It would say.
Here we go.
It would say, "Submit to Building and Safety with the Building Permit Application Improvements on Parcel Five, a Parking Plan Specifically Addressing the Potential Impact of Commercial Vehicle Parking Generated by Par, Parcel Five Improvements, as well as a Parking Plan for Commercial Vehicles Addressing Impact Identified by Said Plan to the Satisfaction of the Planning Director."
It's got parking plan in there twice.
No, wait, yeah, just one second.
Do we have a second?
Need a second before we can move on, don't we?
Yes.
Or it fails for lack of a second.
You're just changing the word "study."
You're changing the word "study."
In line eight, to "plan."
And line 11.
I can't really say that I don't agree until we make a second, so I can talk about not agreeing, all right?
Second.
It sounds like "plan" is in there twice, we just need to strike some language, not change the word "study."
I'm striking language right now.
I agree.
All right, I have a motion.
I agree, it's a little convoluted.
Richard, you said, Claire, the motion has failed for lack of a second.
I thought you seconded.
I did.
We had a second.
So now we have to vote. Can we discuss one more thing?
Yeah, let's see what we have here.
I, Mr. Chair, I'm still, I don't know where in this, because again, I'm sorry, but I have not had time to read the definition of the vehicles. Can someone direct me to that in this draft of this?
It says the impact of a commercial vehicle, is that what you want a definition?
I wanna know the size, and I, I trust our applicant, but I do. But it's for your own protection that I'm bringing this up.
I completely understand.
You know, because the next thing you know, we're gonna pass this quickly.
As former legal counsel of the legislature, I am living for this.
I know you are. I was with you in the halls of the Capitol.
Yes, you were.
I know that. So it's for your, for our applicant's.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So where in this, maybe it's a city attorney.
It's not capitalized, so there probably hasn't been a definition for.
I don't think there's a definition that we're referring to. I think it was meant to be generalized in, in nature to allow for the topic to be addressed adequately on the site.
I understand, I'm just not, I'm not very comfortable with that. So I'm, you know, sorry. If you would've given us more time, Mr. Chair, we could've probably fixed it. And, but that's just the way it is when you do things last minute, so I am not comfortable with that definition. I'm just gonna be honest, thank you very much.
We have a motion in second to accept.
To change the word "study" to "plan." Any other comments on that? Yes, Counselperson Washington.
I would, no, let's, let's get, let's get rid of this.
Let's kill this one, come back again, yeah. Everybody voting on this one, they will come back.
Any other comments on that?
I just got one question. So if it's a "plan" instead of a "study," that's less encumbersome, right?
Correct. If, if all of these motions fail, I still commit to doing this.
Yeah.
Well, I think a comment that I'd like to make, it's a good idea for the amendment, but then we would need to clean up lines 10 and 11, or strike 10 and 11 completely.
Absolutely.
So I don't know if we wanna do this piecemeal, or if.
Vote on the, strike on the.
We have to do the one.
Okay, let's do the one.
So let's call the roll, changing the word from "study" to "plan."
In line eight.
Yes.
Okay, Rabel.
Yes.
Washington?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Schob?
No.
Ward?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes. Motion failed, right?
Correct, four to three.
Now, now we go to strike to strike language.
Okay, so we still have this amendment.
So I am trying to improve the amendment, just the language for clarity. And I would move that, starting at line eight through line 11, that we strike a number of words so that we end up with something that reads, and I'll just start at the start of eight. Improvements on Parcel Five, a Parking Plan, for, or for Commercial Vehicle Parking to the Satisfaction of the Planning Director.
Been moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Any other comments? Questions? Let's vote on that amendment to the amendment, motion to amend.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Now we got the main motion, as amended.
Now, when now we comment on this?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate the work that went into this, I think it's superfluous, I'm not gonna support it. We have a commitment.
Any other, yes, Counselperson Rabel.
First of all, I do support this project, it's a phenomenal project. And I do support this amendment because sometimes when you go about doing a development, there are some things just that, that slip your mind, even though you know you have to plan for it and you're committed to planning for it. I thank you so much, Lynn, for committing to do this. I think this just gives us a little bit of safety, knowing that you are gonna do it, and that David Carey, our competent, capable Planning Director can say, yep, did a great job, and then we can go on, no delays. But I think it is really a good idea, it really is. And I wanna thank Councilwoman Washington for her more accurate wordsmith. I think this really simplifies it and just codifies everything we talked about and all the commitments made, so I think it's a good thing, and I will certainly vote for it.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Counselperson Washington.
First, I offered the amendment because I wanted it to be clear what we were really being asked to do. And secondly, I trust this applicant. I know that there is an inherent need on your part to take care of commercial vehicles.
Yes.
So I don't think it does harm, I don't think it's necessary.
Counselperson Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also think this is a fabulous project for Lincoln, support it wholeheartedly, don't support the amendment or the reason to ask for a plan. So I won't be supporting that today, because the applicant has committed to that, and we know where to find her. But thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
No.
Washington?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, four, three.
Okay. Now we need, that's the main motion?
Motion as amended.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we need your main motion.
We need to vote on the motion to approve this.
Please and thank you.
Which Lynn would like to have us do.
Yes, please.
Any other comments on this? No, I agree with everybody else, this is an exciting time.
This is freaking awesome.
This is gonna be fun.
I had breakfast.
Hopefully, everything can fall into place, and I think it's a good thing, so. Any other comments? Let's vote on the main motion.
Rabel?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you so much, I deeply appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you, Lynn.
That was B or C? That was B, right?
It was B.
We still have C to do.
Yep. Now we move on to 5C, right?
Correct. Item 5C is approving Amendment Number Three to the Highway 77 and Warlock Boulevard Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement between the City of Lincoln, Dial Highway 77 LLC, Weverly Development Company LLC, Southport Venture Company LLC, CDW Properties LLC, La Grande Excavating Inc. in Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association Inc. to amend requirements for construction of infrastructure. Improvements required to serve the PUD specifically as it pertains to South First Street and West Denton Road, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Counselperson Christensen. Any other comments or questions? Yes.
I'd like to move motion to amend number one. It's a substitute attachment A. It's pretty harmless. Did everybody get it?
Which one?
So that's the 21.
That was part of the other one.
No, this is for 21R-118. It's a substitute attachment A. It, it just, reason for the request was Southwest Folsom Development LLC is no longer necessary party to the agreement, and as such, their signature pages are removed from the agreement. So it's pretty, it's an administrative, yeah, thank you.
Benign.
It's benign, so we need.
Second. Been moved and seconded for the motion to amend number one. Any other comments or questions? Please, yes.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Again, as my counsel friend Ward said, while this is benign, and we all agree with that, it's still kind of a little bit last minute. Can we work a little harder on getting together ahead of these meetings and talking?
Very much so.
Yes.
I'm giving that.
Get that vibe, we can do this.
Very deadly.
I think, I think that is an, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, may I just?
Go ahead, Jane.
Throw some words in here. I think that's an excellent idea, and I think in the past, we've talked about motions to amend in the directors' meeting as it relates to the changes to our agenda, and I think we need to make sure that we have them beforehand, so that we can have an awareness when we come to the directors' meeting, then we can ask more questions. So I think that's a great idea.
We can do this.
We've thought about putting these on the directors'. Any motion to amend would be part of the.
Directors' meeting?
The directors' meeting agenda, which would also open it up to the public. Yep.
Which would be good.
I think it's great, yeah.
That way, the public at least would have a chance to look at the motion to amend. Let's work hard on doing that.
I feel like a bad episode of Gomer Powell, surprise, surprise, surprise.
Which would be a good thing. Any other comments on this motion to amend? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Rabel?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Now, it's the main motion.
Now the main motion. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Okay.
Our resolutions, first readings are items 6A through 6F. Ordinances, first reading and related resolutions are items 7A through 7E. And our pending list are items 8A through 8C.
Okay. At this point, before we adjourn, we have our public comment. So anyone wishing to address the council, want a matter not on this agenda, and nor plan to appear on a future agenda, may do so at this session. Individuals are allowed to total five minutes to speak, regardless of the number of topics. Our open microphone will be April 12th, which is today, and April 26th this month. Yes, sir. I have a flashlight. Does that work?
We usually have to have the, someone from the back.
You gotta have somebody from the back bring something forward here.
Well, we can do it without it, you'll all have time.
Jamie, yes.
Jamie is coming in.
Gentleman wants to do electronic presentation.
I'm gonna need to get a laptop.
That's all right, we can do.
You can do the document camera? Yeah, I'll punch it for you. You're set.
Thank you.
City Council, I appreciate your work in Washington today. My name is David Hahn, I'm a resident of Lincoln, Nebraska.
Microphone's over here.
I'm sorry. All right, let me start over, get 15 seconds back. My name is David Hahn, longtime resident of Lincoln, Nebraska, over 40 years, fifth-generation Nebraskan, and I've always admired our star and capital city. I live in, generally in the area known as Westo Past, Ninth Street, in that general area. I'm here to report a clear and present danger to the residents of Westo and perhaps Lincoln. To give you some background, you can go back to news stories in the Lincoln Journal-Star. In 2018, there was a large fire off of West Industrial Boulevard, this is in the Westo area, consumed 60 to 80 acres. I saw that fire, and it was coming toward our house. I also saw that it was coming toward the industrial area. I also saw that the Lincoln Fire Department was ill-equipped to handle this fire, because they don't have any tanker trucks, and that they called in tanker trucks from the military, they called in tanker trucks from small towns in the area. Luckily, it wasn't windy that day, or large parts of homes around Capital Beach area, and also homeless people who are living back in that area would have been consumed in a rapidly moving fire. Now, what started the fire, we don't know for sure. I've asked for fire department reports, and I've only been told I would have to subpoena those, which I guess we could do, but it seems unnecessary to me. When you go back in, the owners of the businesses in those areas, many of whom I've known, said they were sure that the fire was started by the homeless encampments, or the encampments back in the area. And when you go back and take pictures, you see propane tanks, fire, all kinds of fire starting, kindling, that would start that fire that burned in that area. Which, by the way, has not been cleaned up, at least as two months ago, so we're talking two years. Those are pages five. Then, this wasn't the first time. Again, the Lincoln Journal-Star reports to us, at the end of December 2018, another fire started in the area of a homeless encampment. This time, the fire trucks couldn't even get there, they had to use rakes and buckets to put the fire out. Then, last year, as I was returning from Omaha, I saw huge billowing smoke in the area of Sun Valley Boulevard, between Line Drive Road and Westgate Boulevard. I travel that every day, I live in the area, I travel it several times a day. So I, I stopped, and I, I also saw a huge flaming fire. And I, so I called the fire department, and I waited, and I told them, I will wait here, here's my name, here's my phone number, you need to get out here. Fire department came, truck went right by, turned around, and went back to the fire department. I followed them, and I said, fellas, there's a fire there. They told me two things, we were told to leave it, number two, there's no way we can get in and take care of it, because there's no access to this area. So, let's see why that fire started. In these homeless encampments that are between Sun Valley, on Sun Valley Boulevard, between Line Drive and Westgate, on the east side and on the west side, there are open fire pits, there are barbecues, there are propane tanks, there is no fire hydrant, there is[1715.94] pits, there are barbecues, there are propane tanks, there is no fire hydrant, there is no easy way for trucks to get there. And I pleaded with the fire department and the police, the police sent out three people. They all interviewed me, but nobody went down to the encampment to interview how the fire got started. And I said, fellas, this is a problem. We are going to have a big, big fire. Do my ti, is my time up? Is that? Okay. So let me get, you can look through all this. This homeless encampment and this tent encampment is not safe for anybody. So the reason I'm here today is, one week ago, I was coming home, and I saw billowing smoke again. I got there before the fire department was there, and another gentleman got there. I was worried for the people in the homeless encampment because they are trapped. There's a bridge there, it's closed by the city, and they could have been engulfed. The fire department, again, couldn't get there. They had to, they had to break fences down to get onto the levee and drive down. So what I'm saying is, there's a clear and present danger. It needs to be resolved now. If it is not, then the city needs to notify its insurance company and its reinsurance company because they probably won't cover this area. This will happen. That's all tinder down there, it's all dry grass, and I've grown up in the country too, and I've worked on ranches, and I've seen those fires. If this would happen again in that area at night with wind, we will have a travesty un, like Chicago. So, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, we understand.
I'm sorry.
That's yours?
So, what I'm saying is, this is something that is clear and present right now. Oh, the other, just one other thing, and I beg just one minute. When I called this in last week, the police wouldn't come out. They made me meet them at CJ's. They interviewed me, needed my name, telephone number, date of birth. And I said, well, there's a gentleman down there where the fire started, where the tent was, and he said to myself and the other gentleman that it probably started because I had a wet shirt out on the logs, or I was on a dragon cigarette. And that could be, I don't know. But it also could just as easily be a meth pipe or campfires. This will happen again. So I bring it to your attention for some action.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward to speak?
Robert Bor. Council members. It was nice to, I'm just going to share a couple of quotes, quotes with you tonight, but I want to first say that it was nice to see a couple of your naked faces recently in a super-spreader event. It really was great. I won't say who or where. Anyway, two quotes to share with you. One is a letter written to the British Medical Journal, and I believe it was, I'm trying to scan now because I've lost my place. Here we go. My finger's moving too fast. Dear editor, this is, I think, February of this year. History is littered with examples of the atrocities which ensue when doctors abandon their traditional principles and judgment in favor of unquestioning subservience to government dictate. Medical involvement in torture, these are the results. Human experimentation and psychiatric punishment of political dissidents being familiar examples. Certain individuals take as axiomatic that there was no prior immunity in the population, that lockdowns are effective, that computer modeling is realistic, that statistics have been accurate, and that the World Health Organization statements are reliable. All of these parameters have been widely challenged by knowledgeable and conscientious, conscientious researchers whose findings were often discarded, censored, or vilified. From a medical perspective, and this comes from a retired GP in Wales, from a medical perspective, this was clear early on in the crisis that disregarding clinical acumen in favor of blind obedience to abnormal ventilation measures, reliance on unsuitable laboratory tests for diagnosis and management, and abandoning the duty of care to elderly hospitalized patients and those waiting diagnosis and treatment of serious illnesses or diseases would create severe problems down the line. Doctors who had empirically found effective pharmaceutical remedies and preventative treatments were ignored, or worse, denigrated or silenced. Information regarding helpful dietary supplements was suppressed. This was further compounded by rule changes to death certificates, corners instructions, autopsy guidelines, DNR notices, and the cruel social isolation policy enforcement regarding family visits to the sick and dying. When medical professionals allow themselves to be manipulated by corrupt politicians and influenced by media propaganda instead of being guided by their own ethical principles and common sense based on decades of clinical experience, the outlook becomes very bleak indeed. Historically, public respect for and trust in doctors has exceeded that awarded to politicians. The unquestioning capitulation of medicine to an authoritarian executive and predatory corporate power may have well undermined the doctor-patient relationship for a generation. And now, this last quick quote comes from Catherine Fitz, very intelligent lady. Let's pretend we're in a world where we have two groups of people. One consists of online retailers, the other of Main Street retailers, and their pals pretend, excuse me, the online retailers and their pals pretend there's a plague, and they announce that all the Main Street retailers are nonessential, at which point, the central bank prints a lot of money which they lend to the online retailers at zero percent. And those retailers can now take over the market share of the Main Street retailers, essentially for free. They can take all their income, and that drives their stock up. So their stocks go up very high, and let's say they sell their stocks when they are very high, and they reinvest that money in building out smart grids in communities so that they can expand their market share further. And let's say the government creates something called opportunity zones, where they can shelter their capital gains tax on their sale of stocks. So how do they, so how do they get a whole lot of real estate fast and cheap? Well, they send in an army of protesters to burn the place down in the opportunity zones, and that enables them to pick up the real, the real estate for cheap. Never mind, the Main Street retailers were simply run, many Main Street retailers were simply run out of business because they were regarded as nonessential by executive tyrants. Any of that sound familiar?
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward to speak tonight, this afternoon? It's not evening yet.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Truckee, 4925, Thomas Brook Lane. And I guess it's official now, the DHMs and mask mandate are permanent in Lincoln. Last week, the health director indicated that before any restrictions are lifted, 75% of Lancaster County residents must be vaccinated. This is a number that likely will never happen, and they know it. The goalposts move yet again. It seems it won't even matter if the pandemic is over. Vaccinations are now the key, the key, whether you need one or not. And how many shots will we need? Talk of a third shot is now happening. This will never end. And never mind the fact that there have been far more deaths and life-threatening events from COVID vaccines in the last four months than from all other vaccines combined for all of last year. And by the way, that 75% is a farce for another reason. It purposefully leaves out those that have immunity because they have already recovered from COVID. But I guess when the World Health Organization discards a century of established science of immunology, and now states that herd immunity can only be achieved through vaccination, can we expect any better from our local health department? They all know this is a complete lie, and that we likely already have achieved herd immunity. Lancaster County has had over 30,000 confirmed COVID cases alone. Why do, why do at least those cases not count toward our local herd immunity? But could it be that the health department is not so sure about those 30,000 cases? This past week, it was uncovered that the cycle threshold cutoff of the PCR test being used in Lancaster County is 45 cycles. These tests were never really meant for clinical diagnosis, but it is now generally accepted that 30 to 35 cycles is the proper range to try to reduce false positives. In fact, none other than Dr. Fauci had this to say. What is now sort of evolving into a bit of a standard is that if you get a cycle threshold of 35 or more, the chances of it being replication competent are minuscule. So I think if somebody does come in with a 37, 38, even 36, you've got to say, you know, it's just dead nucleotides, period. How many of those 30,000 cases which were used to frighten the public and were used as justification for all the restrictions are actually false positives? The public deserves to know the answer to this. The CDC also just released a report stating that the likelihood of catching COVID from a contaminated surface is about one in 10,000. So all the compulsive sanitizing of everything has been almost a complete waste of time and money for our citizens and businesses. And I'm going to continue to bring up the absolute insanity displayed by this health department regarding masks. Did you know that over the last seven days, the top 10 states with the most per capita COVID cases all have state-level mask mandates? Did you also know that the world uses and discards 129 billion masks a month? There are growing concerns about the inhalation of and pollution from the microplastics in disposable masks, and I see at least four of you are wearing disposable masks today. And I want to listen, I want you to listen to the conclusion of a lengthy paper published in January by the cardiology department at Stanford. Quote, "The data suggests that both medical and non-medical face masks are ineffective to block human-to-human transmission of viral and infectious diseases such as SARS-CoV-2 and COVID-19, supporting against the usage of face masks. Wearing face masks has been demonstrated to have substantial adverse physiological and psychological effects. These include hypoxia, hypercapnia, shortness of breath, increased acidity and toxicity, activation of fear and stress response, rise in stress hormones, immunosuppression, fatigue, headaches, decline in cognitive depression. Long-term consequences of wearing face masks can cause health deterioration developing and progression of chronic diseases and premature death. Government policymakers and health organizations should utilize proper and scientific evidence-based approach with respect to wearing face masks when the latter is considered as preventative intervention for public health," end quote. And yet, we are doing this to our children every single school day. This is beyond shameful. There are 74.2 million kids under the age of 18 in the United States, and only 251 have died with COVID so far. This means the survival rate for our kids is 99.9997%. And teachers that want the vaccine already have it. We are robbing our kids of a normal experience if we continue to allow this to stand. But let's be honest, none of this is about public health any longer. A culture of fear and blind obedience has been cultivated. The pandemic has, has brought out petty tyrants everywhere, and sadly, our mayor is one of those. I trust that the citizens Lincoln, of Lincoln are wise to this, of what's going on, and will be making changes shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward at this time?
Samuel Lyon, Lincoln, Nebraska, council. For the record, and for those watching at home, the bags have been removed from the chairs in here, in the chamber, but in their place, for those that may not be able to see at home, candy cane Christmas ribbon has been placed over the majority of the seating, limiting the seating in this room to eight and a half percent capacity. And for the last three weeks in a row, people have been forced to sit in the hallway as there has not been enough space in this room to accommodate the audience, a situation that has been going on for months. I came across a prayer today that I think applies to this situation. It goes, "God, grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." This year has allowed each of us to make extensive use of this prayer, hasn't it? For months, myself and many others with similar concerns have spoken to you on several topics, but many of them revolve around a common theme, the appeal to this body's willingness to listen and include the public in its public meetings and policy decisions. This seems to be falling into things we cannot change category. So today, I want to speak about something this body mentions before every meeting, and that is the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. It's posted on the back wall. Within it is a section named Public Meetings: Rights of the Public Attending. Section 841412 establishes the rights of members of the public attending a meeting of a public body. One, members of the public have the right to attend and the right to speak at meetings of public bodies, and all or any part of a public meeting, except closed sessions. Section four, no public body shall, to circumvent the Open Meetings law, hold its meeting in a place known to be too small to accommodate the anticipated audience. However, a public body shall not be in violation of this prohibition if it meets in its traditional meeting place in this state. Now, I'll give you, this is the traditional meeting place, but eight and a half percent of the chairs is not traditional for this meeting place. Secondly, and it actually came up today, discussing policy decisions in private out of the view of the public. Circumvention of Open Meetings Act 841411, electronic communications may not be used to circumvent any of the public government processes established by the Open Meetings Act. Neither may emails, faxes, or other electronic communications. Circumvention of the Open Meetings Act, Section 841410 prohibits a person or a public body from circumventing the purpose of the open meeting statutes by the use of any closed session, informal meeting, chance meeting, social gathering, or email. This has been happening, and happened in a directors' meeting when it was asked. Please, email questions, for you to email the directors of the city and the city attorney questions, so that it could, he would have a chance to speak more fully, and instead of speaking at the directors' meeting, he emailed you back. Those emails were requested and denied to the public. And lastly, weaponizing the agenda process to block open mic speech, an embarrassing situation we witnessed a few months ago with the Point of Order debacle. So today, I did something that no constituent wants to do, or should be required to do. I filed a complaint with the Nebraska Attorney General's Office and the Lancaster County Attorney's Office requesting relief from the restrictions of this body that it has placed on the public. Today, I heard it mentioned that you would revisit and talk about how many seats you would allow the public to sit in, and my recommendation is that, as you mentioned before every meeting, the Open Meetings Act, the law, given the rights to the people, that you consult that document that rests at the back of the room for counsel on how to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Way. I live at 7120 Adam Street, apartment 53. I did not plan on speaking today, but as a matter of concern has been risen, and I was here on that matter of concern because it was brought to my attention online, I think I should relate the details which I have gathered here today. I arrived here at 307, in the council chamber at 307 today. Five people were in the council not wearing masks, and seven people were in the council chair, council wearing masks. Outside, since this events have taken place, there's an additional seating with both televisions and audio, which sits six. There was one person who was occasionally sitting in that place, and out in the lobby, they've set out televisions and audio, and that has about eight chairs, and nobody was sitting in those chairs. My entire time at this council meeting, I have not noticed a situation at this meeting where anybody was denied access to one of the viewing areas, or that of the three viewing areas, any of them were more than 33% full. I thank you for your time, and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you. Is there anybody else like to come forward to speak on any item? Is there anybody else like to come forward to speak on any item?
Good afternoon. My name is Roy Helm. I live at 2750 South 13th Street, and I am still not a candidate for the upcoming city council election.
These masks tend to make people a little squirrely, sometimes even nuts. But wearing them, we must. This is not out of fear. This is not out of kowtowing. It's out of respect and concern for my community members. The actions that have been taken by the city administration are preventative, and I am not in fear of the plague, but I do have grave concerns. Therefore, I do take measures to protect myself, my family, and my community. I have heard this referred to as fear-mongering, and even cowardly by some. I just don't agree. Is it fear-mongering or running around like a chicken little when the weather service warns us to take shelter due to an impending storm or possible tornado? Or the adage to drive around, "Don't drown"? What about when thunder roars, "Go indoors"? I've never been struck by lightning and don't know anyone who has, so why should I be concerned about electricity falling from the sky? Why? Of course, we're not required to adhere to that sage wisdom, any more than we are required to wear a condom, even though we do have evidence that unprotected sex can kill you. So we don't always have regulations in place to protect us and others from ourselves, but we do have an obligation to wear masks, and for that, I am grateful. Now, if we could just do something about gun control. I brought this mask as a prop, and I will thank Samuel for the inspiration, as he brought a chair to the last public forum and had it raised up to make a point. Now, I'm sure that he felt that it was impactful, but it reminded me of watching All-Star wrestling when I was a child. At some point, when it wasn't going well for one of the contestants, they would often bring a chair into the ring to make a point, as it were. A chair is a prop to drive home a point, not to offer it for someone to sit in, but to put on a performance. It occurred to me that if there really was concern about people having to stand in the hallways, that this chair might have been offered in an act of goodwill and charity, rather than to be used as theatrics. But now, I, too, have been infected by this disease of making personal commentary about another in these chambers. Too often, I have listened to personal attacks on individuals who serve in public office, that along with self-righteous indignation, arrogance, derogatory names, and general hate-mongering. And aren't we clever with what we have printed on our shirts, or the tote bags with the name of a former president prominently displayed? Sure, we have the First Amendment and have the freedom to say pretty much anything we want, but we must also be mindful that our words can also inflict as much carnage and pain as a bullet from a gun, or that not all of us share the same opinions, let alone values. And speaking of values, I have heard about the virtue of Nebraska values in these chambers, but based on some of the behavior I have seen displayed, I'm so very thankful that I am from somewhere else. Yeah, that's right. I'm not from around here. However, I appreciate that at least in these parts, that y'all aren't the majority, and there are plenty of good folks in this community that I'm happy to call friends, and I'm happy to call this community home. But what I really wanted to talk about is how wonderful it is that spring is here. The flowers are blooming, the trees are budding out and flowering. It's becoming green again with allergies on the uptick. And we're getting a puppy. Perhaps instead of focusing on what we think is wrong, we should be thankful for what is right. If we only focus on the anger, we will lose sight of the happiness and joy. Certainly, there is much angst and despair, not only in our community, but the world we live in. But if we allow ourselves to be consumed by it, the good will pass us by. I am happy to be here today, and I am very appreciative of the clerk of these proceedings get to listen to all of us and transcribe what we all have to say, and you don't get a say of your own. I do thank you. I thank you all. I appreciate what you do. I'm going to put my mask back on, and I think it goes without saying, Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else like to come forward at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say I remember the golden rule, and I move adjournment.
Second.
Been moved in second by a councilperson, Ward.
Washington.
Okay.
The hearing is in your future.
Ah, you do, don't you?
Please.
Okay, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shove?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
We stand adjourned.